Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this special meeting to order at 4:01 PM on this fifth day of January 2021. Pursuant to School Board Bylaw 146, a special meeting of the School Board has been called by the Superintendent with the concurrence of the School Board Chair for Tuesday's January 5th, 2021 meeting at 4:00 PM in the School Administration Building. The purpose of this special meeting is for the Superintendent, staff, and advisors to discuss with the School Board proposed adjustments to the adopted Fall 2020 Plan. Also pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7th, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it is impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend this School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe this meeting through live streaming on VB schools dot com, broadcast on VB TV Channel 47, and on Zoom. So with that, this workshop session is called to order, this special session, and Madam Clerk, would you take, do a verbal roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Presenting School Board Chambers are Ms. Rye, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Riggs. Attending via Zoom is Ms. Holtz and Ms. Melnick.
Here. And I will add to that, that Mrs. Melnick and Mrs. Holtz are participating remotely, locally, from home due to health reasons, and Mrs. Weems is absent due to illness. Thank you. So with that, I will call for adoption of today's agenda. A motion, Mrs. Riggs, second, Mrs. Anderson. Okay, please show your approval with a raised hand.
Ms. Holtz, how do you vote?
I raise my hand, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a vote of 10 to 0, the motion passed.
Thank you. So with the adoption of the agenda, we will now proceed to our discussion on proposed adjustments to the adopted Fall 2021 Plan, beginning with our presenter, Dr. Bergen. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Ms. Rye. Members of the Board, Dr. Spence. For our viewing public, my name is Mark Bergen, I'm Chief of Staff for the School Division, and along with other members of our senior leadership team, we'll be providing updates for you, proposed updates on our operating plans for the remainder of this school year. I'm going to begin this presentation with a high-level summary of the information that has been presented to the School Board on the research, evolving research for safely offering in-person instruction. I'll then review information from the medical professionals that have been advising us since the beginning of this pandemic. Regarding the impacts on students' mental health that indicate some urgency with needing to have students return for in-person instruction, and will be followed by Dr. Rogers who will review assessment results since, from the beginning of this school year to the present. Dr. Rogers will be followed by Mr. Freeman, who will provide a review of the health and safety mitigations that are already in place, as well as introduce several new components to our planning efforts. Dr. Spence will then present the Administration's recommendation for a phased return of students for in-person instruction to begin later this month, and he'll be followed by Dr. Robertson, who will provide an update on plans for winter sports. We'll then conclude the workshop, as we typically do, with question and answers with our staff that are present physically and by Zoom, as well as with some physicians who are in attendance with us this afternoon. Since you all have already received a comprehensive presentation just prior to the holiday break at the December 15 Board Meeting from our advising physicians, and because you have just received a research brief with a summary of that same information, I do not intend to review with you the information in detail. I will share with you, quite simply and in summary, that under the recommendation of our advising physicians and in consultation with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, we are proposing that we begin to use school-level transmission data rather than exclusively consider, exclusively consider community-level transmission metrics, i.e. the red, yellow, and green zones that we have been talking about for the past six months, when making determinations about reopening schools for in-person instruction. As detailed in the research brief provided to the Board, there is now increasing evidence that transmission within the school setting is not occurring in the same way that was first feared back in the spring and summer of 2020. Local, national, and international data supports that K-12 schools represent only a small fraction of COVID-19 outbreaks, which are defined as two or more cases connected to a single place. From the data collected from school divisions who have remained open during low and high community transmission periods, we now know from the research that children are not driving transmission in schools or in the community, but rather play only a minor role in the transmission of COVID-19. This is due in part to children demonstrating consistently lower susceptibility to acquiring and transmitting the virus, or in other words, in plain speak, they are poor catchers and slight spreaders. Research studies from across the region, the state, the country, and internationally indicate that in-school transmission of COVID-19 in-school settings is low, mainly as a result of the strong mitigation strategies that are employed by schools. The question, therefore, should not be whether or not schools should be open for in-person instruction, but rather how to keep them open safely. At higher levels of community spread, higher mitigation strategy should be employed to include safety audits, to ensure adherence to mitigation expectations, and schools should remain open for in-person instruction unless and until mandated to close by the Governor. Of course, children who are deemed high-risk or who reside with high-risk individuals should continue to have the option of receiving their instruction virtually, and staff should, of course, be given the proper protective equipment and options for alternative work environments as needed. To be clear, given the current levels of community transmission, we can fully expect that there will be individual cases of COVID-19 appearing in our schools once students and staff return for in-person instruction. When this occurs, it may become necessary to revert to virtual instruction for individual classrooms. However, any such decision would be made in consultation with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, as historically has been done whenever there's a health threat or concern. Also, there is evidence of, if there is evidence of increasing school burden, which might result from high absenteeism or an inability to staff a building due to high numbers of quarantine, it may be necessary to temporarily revert an entire school to virtual instruction at that time. Again, these decisions would be made in consultation with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health. While we support a full virtual option for families who desire it, we have become increasingly concerned with the mental health and well-being of our students. The evolving research on the lack of socialization with no opportunity for in-person instruction has shown significant impacts on child development, such as increases in depression, anxiety, obesity, and substance abuse, and the research also indicates increases in societal problems such as homelessness, criminal behavior, and family violence. As has been shared with the Board by our local medical professionals, compared with 2019, the proportion of mental health-related visits increased in 2020 by approximately 24% for children ages 5 to 11, and by 31% for students ages 12 to 17. This has resulted in long waiting lists to see mental health counselors, as well as increased emergency room visits for mental health concerns. In addition, demanding concerns with students' mental health and well-being, we are also equally concerned about the impacts on academic achievement. On that note, I'd like to now invite Dr. Rogers to the podium to share with you some compelling data from assessments conducted throughout the first semester that also indicate an urgency with needing to have students return for in-person instruction with a particular emphasis on achievement gaps by reporting groups. Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. Good afternoon, everyone, Happy New Year.
Welcome.
This afternoon, we will be providing you with a high-level overview of beginning-of-the-year formative assessment data that has provided us with a snapshot relative to how our students are progressing in literacy and numeracy at the beginning of the school year as compared to previous years. And as a reminder, and as I've shared with you previously in your September 9th meeting, that we use low-stakes formative assessments regularly in order to modify teaching and learning activities to meet student needs and to improve student achievement. We are planning to bring summative assessment data to you for your review in one of your future meetings. For this afternoon, what you'll see is, in addition to the social-emotional impact that the extended school closure appears to have on our students, and although formative, the data that we will share also gives us pause for concern relative to learning loss both short-term and long-term, and the potential for increasing disparities particularly amongst our youngest learners and students who are considered most at risk at all levels. I've asked Mrs. Danielle Calucci, who is our Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, to join me in sharing some of the formative literacy data that we've collected and analyzed from the beginning of the school year, and then I'll share data with you on our students' progress in mathematics, as well as share how our students did with third marking period grades at the secondary level. And at this time, I'll ask Mrs. Calucci to join me at the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Good afternoon, everyone. At the elementary level, one of our greatest responsibilities is to ensure our students acquire the early literacy skills necessary to meet future educational goals and be successful. We utilize the phonological awareness literacy screening in Virginia Beach, known as PALS, to assess our youngest learners and target each child's explicit instructional needs as related to literacy fundamentals such as spelling, phonemic and phonological awareness, letter sounds, word recognition, and fluency. These are most predictive of future reading success and identify students who are most at risk of experiencing reading difficulties and delays. We give this assessment or screening three times annually, and we use the scores and monitoring tools PALS offers us to ensure ongoing student progress. In addition, students who are identified by the screening as at-risk, as measured by the assessment, receive two and a half hours of additional intervention services per week funded through the state's Early Intervention Reading Initiative, also known as the EIRI Grant. The slide you see displays comparative data for fall, beginning-of-the-year screenings over the last three years. As you can see, this past fall, we had 26% of our K-3 student, or K-2 students, nearly twice as many students than in previous years, at 14% were identified as being at risk and requiring this additional intervention. Next slide. This school year, PALS was also given to students in third grade in addition to K-2. The data in the gold bars shows benchmark data for students in grades K through 3. When we look at student performance on the beginning-of-the-year PALS assessment reporting groups as compared to last year, you will notice increases in student identification rates that range between 11% more Caucasian students being identified to 16% more African-American students being identified and requiring additional literacy support. Additionally, you will notice 12% more students with disabilities and 15% more economically disadvantaged students were identified this year as requiring the intervention. Next slide. We also use a formative assessment called the Reading Inventory, or RI. The Reading Inventory is a formative reading assessment designed to evaluate students' reading abilities, monitor their reading progress throughout the course of the school year, set goals for their individual reading growth, and to match students to books at appropriate reading levels, which helps to make reading rewarding, constructive, and enjoyable. We give RI to students in grades 3 through 9 in Virginia Beach, two to three times a year, and we will also give the assessment to grade 2 students during the mid and end-of-year testing window. RI scores obtained at the beginning of the year communicate the percentage of students entering the classroom at the beginning of the year who have already met the end-of-year expectation. So I wanted to make sure that was understood, because it's a little tricky to look at. Overall, RI data collected at the beginning of this school year indicated a 4.9% decrease in reading performance than the previous school year, beginning-of-year data. It is important to note that data included for students in grades 6 through 9 do not include all students, as only those students who were enrolled in an English class during the first term were assessed. As such, the 2020-2021 data for the bottom two columns will change at the beginning of the second term. Now, I will turn it back over to Dr. Rogers to discuss some of our math data.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Calucci. At the elementary level, we use locally created, locally-created formative assessments in math for students in grades 3 through 5 in order to determine student progress, as well as to identify any instructional support that's required for all students, and especially those students who are considered at risk. These assessments, again, are not meant to be high-stakes assessments, and they are intended to support teachers in identifying any concepts that students need additional time on or instruction in in order to master before the end of the school year, and we use small-group instruction to make that happen. Also, these formative assessments are very helpful in ensuring that all of our students' needs are met and addressed in a timely manner, and have led to our division performing well as compared to the state on elementary math SOL assessments because of the explicit way in which they bring awareness to student misconceptions, and they also help us to measure students' understanding of mathematical concepts. As such, our concerns are the decreases that we've seen on these formative assessments. So if you notice, at the elementary level in grades 3 through 5, on the green chart, that we've seen a 13% to 17% decrease across grade levels in students, meaning our locally-created math benchmarks as compared to last year. Our African-American student performance in those grades ranged from 14% to 21% less than in the previous year. Our students with disabilities' performance was only 1% less in grade 3 and 5% less in grade 4 than in the previous year. Our students with disabilities, the good news, is in grade 5 saw a 4% increase in the beginning-of-year benchmark assessment. Now, at the secondary level, we also use locally-created formative assessments in the form of pre-assessments, benchmark assessments, and common unit assessments in order to monitor student achievement, as well as to make adjustments to instruction. And again, before I share the formative data for middle and high school, again, it's important to remind the Board that the formative data we are looking at is not data for all students for the entire school year, as roughly, only about half of our middle and high school students are taking math now as a result of the four-by-four schedule. We are, however, in the process of giving post-assessments for the first term, so we will be able to bring you some summative data in a future meeting. So at the middle school level, we are using both benchmarks and common unit assessments, and I want to briefly share how our students in middle school did on the first two unit assessments of the year. So in the blue chart located below, you'll notice on Unit Assessments 1 and 2, we identified a 4% to 6% decline in student performance as compared to students' performance on the same unit assessments in grades 6 through 8 last year. And with reporting groups across grade levels, African-American students, again, good news, showed a 6 percentage point increase on the Unit 2, 8th grade math assessment, but we also saw decreases ranging from 6% to 10% on all other unit assessments as compared to the previous year. Our students with disabilities do show a 2 percentage point increase on the Unit 2, 6th grade math assessment, but we saw decreases ranging from 4% to 6% on all other unit assessments across grades from the previous school year. Now, for our high school credit band courses, we did use a math pre-assessment, where we looked at student performance on standards rather than looking at the aggregate performance on the assessment, because math subject matter at the high school level is more discreet, and the content doesn't spiral as it does in the elementary and middle school levels. So in algebra, we found students this year underperformed on 3 of 28 standards as compared to students in algebra last year, so they either met or performed above standards on 25 of those standards. Students this year performed, underperformed on 5 of 32 geometry standards as compared to students in geometry at the beginning of the year last school year. Their performance on 27 geometry standards were either on par or above last year's geometry students on the pre-assessment. And students taking Algebra 2 underperformed on 4 of 24 Algebra 2 standards as compared to students taking Algebra 2 last year. We continue to closely monitor students' performance in math using formative assessments in order to offer support as well as guidance to our teachers and our students. Now, I'd like to share some academic summary information for our secondary students for the third marking period, and as shared in other Board meetings, here is data from secondary schools at the end of marking period 3. As you can see, at least 83% of middle school students earned a C minus or higher on their course, in their courses. In high school, at least 70%, 77% of students earned a C minus or higher in their courses. And additionally, at least 6.9% of middle school students and 12.9% of high school students failed at least one course during the third marking period. And as with the data that was just shared with our local assessments, gaps do exist in academic performance with select reporting groups, and we noticed that larger gaps exist for students in option 2. And it's important to note that there is no such data for our elementary school students because they are in the middle of the second nine weeks for the school year. And just anecdotally, we do feel that these data can be attributed to the great work of our teachers in maintaining positive relationships with their students, and our students who are working extremely hard to stay engaged in learning, and of course, our parents who are providing supportive environments at home to help their children succeed. And we also know and recognize that we have to continue utilizing our support systems, such as our student response teams, our school counselors, as well as our administrators, to support those students who are not meeting success in their courses. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Jack Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. As we can consider the student-centered reasons for why we want to reopen our schools, we also know that considering the health and safety is also critically important, so much so that the key third metric for school opening is and will continue to be the degree to which we are robustly implementing health mitigation strategies. So I'd like to spend some time talking about that. There are many elements to our COVID mitigations. By now, you're all familiar with the Swiss cheese model for understanding how layering several mitigations is the best way to reduce the spread of COVID-19. The layering of our mitigations has been effective. Since early on, we placed emphasis on wearing face masks, maintaining distance, disinfecting surfaces, and practicing good hand hygiene. In addition to these mitigations, there are many other layers of mitigations that we have implemented. You are all familiar with these, there is nothing new here, but it is worth a high-level refresher for some of those layers. And for the most part, I'm going to keep this at a high level, however, I do want to spend a little time on masks. The proper wearing of masks has proven to be one of the strongest measures to mitigate the spread of the disease. Wearing masks in our buildings is the standard, and masks should only be removed when eating while a distance of at least six feet is maintained, or when alone in a room. During the original brief that we received from Dr. Mitchell, he shared an observation that doctors were more likely to catch COVID-19 in a break room than when treating patients. The learning point was that when treating patients, doctors were on guard and followed mitigations. In the break room, when around other apparently healthy doctors and there was a perception of safety, masks and distancing were sometimes relaxed. Consistent implementation of mitigations is important, and we will continue to emphasize the importance of proper mask-wearing in our communications. To quickly review other mitigations, our distancing plans include proper classroom and cafeteria layouts, as well as teaching everyone to practice distancing during transmission transitions to and from the classroom. We're providing opportunities for hand washing and have placed approved hand sanitizers in classrooms and workspaces. The Virginia Beach City Public School self-screening tool has been communicated and is prominently posted at school entrances and on our website. The simple intent, if you are experiencing COVID-like symptoms, don't come to school and risk exposing others. Our custodial staff has been implementing enhanced cleaning protocols since early in the pandemic using CDC-approved disinfectants. In addition to those protocols, CDC-approved disinfectant has been provided for use by adults in our classrooms to enable swift disinfecting when needed. Other notable mitigations are providing appropriate personal protective equipment, cohorting, assigning seats when appropriate, maximizing ventilation, and ensuring HVAC systems are functioning as designed. In September, there was a portion of the update brief that was dedicated to ventilation and HVAC. To keep this at a high level, we are in compliance with CDC guidance, and we continue to proactively monitor the proper functioning of our HVAC systems, and have shared guidance with schools for increasing ventilation by opening doors and windows when safe and appropriate. For those riding our buses, the same concepts apply. Face masks are required, seats are assigned to ensure cohorting, windows are open when weather permits, and the majority of our buses only have one student assigned per seat. The final piece that I'll note here is our contact tracing efforts. This enables us to identify individuals who are at risk and keep them from putting others at risk. We are closely connected with the Virginia Department of Health and work with them to maximize the safety of our students and staff. Our school nurses are trained and will now be conducting contact tracing when needed during school hours. CHKD athletic trainers will also support contact tracing when their schedule allows. These adjustments will better distribute the workload and will improve the timeliness of contact tracing. What contact tracing has revealed is that there have only been five outbreaks in Virginia Beach City Public School buildings. Remember the word outbreak means contact tracing showed that COVID was passed from one person to another while they were in our building. That low rate of transmission is not unique to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. It has been similar for other school divisions that have implemented similar mitigations, and that is good news. The mitigations that we implemented are working. But just like a chain is only as strong as its weakest link, mitigations are only effective when they are consistently implemented. So how do we know that our mitigations are being implemented as intended? This is where we are ready to take the next step in our mitigation strategy. Dr. Spence briefly mentioned at the last School Board meeting that we are in the process of implementing COVID safety assessment teams to evaluate how well our mitigations are being implemented. Much like the security audits that were implemented following the Blue Ribbon Panel, this type of assessment is a best-practice support consistent implementation of safety mitigations. These teams will be aligned under the Office of Safe Schools, and Safe Schools will implement the program. The leads of each COVID safety assessment team will be former principals, they are trusted leaders. These teams are not, are designed to enable no-notice assessments at our schools, and they will not be one-time assessments. Each school is intended to be assessed every two weeks at a minimum. So there will be an opportunity for continued improvements by regularly sharing with principals how effective their schools are in implementing mitigations. A good part of any assessment process is incorporating A good part of any assessment process is incorporating feedback. The Office of Safe Schools will become the point of contact for feedback related to proper adherence to COVID mitigations. I think that you have all received communications from employees who have shared concerns with you. This process will enable that type of feedback to go straight to the office that is responsible for COVID safety mitigations. With good feedback, we can focus effort and address those concerns as they arise. Assessments are intended to begin on January nineteenth. The final topic that I want to make you aware of, as you know, vaccination for Virginia Beach frontline personnel has begun. We are in close coordination with the Virginia Department of Health and the city, and we have a plan in place for our nurses to receive vaccinations, and we will continue to work with the Virginia Department of Health and the city on plans to deliver more vaccinations when available, and we will update you on that progress. With that, I will now turn it over to Dr. Spence.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. So as was noted at the beginning of this conversation, the question before the board now should devolve from whether or not to open schools to how to do so safely and mitigate risk of exposure. And the metrics that we should be talking about are not metrics that were developed in July and August when we knew a little about school transmission. Instead, we have new information, and that information is based on months with students in school, both locally here in Virginia Beach and regionally, nationally, and internationally. And that data indicates, as you've heard over and over again tonight, that students can be in schools, and that transmission is low in schools because of our ability to successfully implement the health and safety mitigations that, that Mr. Freeman just discussed, which again include mandating mask-wearing and, and distance requirements and spinning up safety teams to help with consistency and enforcement of protocols. Based on the current thinking about school data and COVID-19 transmission, rather than looking at, again, the metrics from the summer, we have to also look at school-level data, things like outbreaks and quarantining and absenteeism and our ability to staff and make decisions about classrooms and schools rather than shuttering the entire district. And we need to be thinking, as Mr. Freeman talked about, about that key third metric from the CDC, which is our assessment of our ability to mitigate. At the same time, we do need to, and, and we have continued to partner with the Health Department, and we want to honor their requests, which include to delay the opening of school following the holidays. They're seeking to understand its impact on community burden. And in addition, as you heard at the last meeting, Dr. Lindsay does understand the need to open schools, although she believes that a phased approach would be necessary to provide time to monitor the effect of our mitigation efforts in this environment. And you may recall that she suggested that a minimum of three to four weeks between phases would be needed to do that monitoring. I do want to try to properly represent her comments to me in a meeting that she and I had with staff over break, and also in a conversation that I had with her again this morning. Dr. Lindsay had indicated that the Health Department preference would be to not open schools during a surge, but she also acknowledges that the academic and social and emotional challenges that are associated with school closures, like we've discussed tonight, and she understands that we have to consider that as well in our decisions. She did indicate that if we were to open schools, the approach we are proposing is consistent with what new guidance may be coming from the Department of Health. Importantly, I do want to reiterate that we do have a good partnership with them, and as we move forward, we will, of course, continue to work with her in the Health Department to monitor impact on schools and on community burden. So again, as our understanding of COVID-19 has evolved, our work has to evolve as well as we want to provide the education that our families here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools both expect and need. This has not been, this is not, this will not be easy work. You all know this. You know this for sure. For every parent or teacher who wants children back in the classroom, there are those who do not. Every single stakeholder in this division has an opinion about what is best for the children and staff of this city and of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And so there is not a way for me tonight to give you a recommendation that can meet all of these competing expectations and please all of our stakeholders as we're waiting for a vaccine to be distributed and for things to return to some semblance of normalcy. There's not a way for me to do that. That's just not the reality that we're operating in. So the question is, how do we make a recommendation? And how do we make a decision? So I, I have to take a hard look at what we've learned since July. I have to take a hard look and listen to the data, to the science, and I have to lean into my core beliefs as an educator. And so as I've done since the beginning of this pandemic, I am relying on the science to guide my recommendations with the health and safety of staff and students as a top priority. And I know there are some who question that, but I know that you, board members, know that my team and you in wrestling with these decisions keep staff and student safety at the top of our thinking. And so I have been, and I will continue to consult with our local medical professionals and the Health Department and review what the journals say, all while trying to keep moving our division forward. And what I know is that the bottom line is this, the evidence strongly indicates that schools are not the sites of significant viral transmission. And what we absolutely know right now is that our kids need to be in school more than ever. And I don't think, I do think there is one area of agreement, is that we don't know, we do know our kids need to be in school, and the question is how to get there. So with that context, I want to now review our proposal for phasing students back to school. And what I'll say is this represents our best thinking based on everything that's been shared with you this evening. So to begin, we are proposing no in-person instruction for this week and next week, so for the two weeks following the holidays. This reflects both our operational needs and the desire by our Health Department to monitor community burden post-holidays. Beginning the week of January the eighteenth, we are proposing to bring back all Option One pre-K through sixth-grade students. This is consistent with the understanding and guidance that we can, can and should consider serving our younger students and our most vulnerable students as quickly as possible. We would follow the same schedule for these students as in the past with Mondays as asynchronous days at home and Tuesday through Friday for in-person instruction. And we would also be recommending bringing back high-needs special education students at this time. All of that would begin on January the nineteenth. I want to make sure I'm clear because January eighteenth is a school holiday. We would then have a three-week monitoring period. So we would have the week of January the eighteenth, and then the following two weeks to monitor and ensure that the mitigations that we have put in place, that we discussed tonight, are working and that transmission in schools remains low. Following that monitoring period where we would be meeting weekly with the Health Department to discuss our data, we would then propose bringing back grades seven through twelve to include all specialty programs if, in fact, those mitigations are working as we anticipate they would be. This would be in the hybrid model for all students, grade seven through twelve, and that would begin the week of February the eighth. As we prepare for the possibility of students coming back, and as you heard earlier, I do want to reemphasize that we are taking additional steps to ensure compliance with mitigation strategies, with those mitigation strategies that we know work. And finally, I'll just note that at your meeting next week, you will be asked to make a decision about this proposal based on current agenda planning. And as you, as you do so and reflect on that, I'll also be asking you to affirm that should we proceed with these recommendations, I would need to have the authority to close classrooms and/or schools as needed and in consultation with the Health Department and/or other school division staff due to issues that may arise with an outbreak or quarantining or staffing, et cetera. So with that, and, and when I say that have the authority to do so, we certainly recognize that some of that authority is already implied, but I would need to be able to do that without having to call the board together for discussion. With all of that, I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Robertson, who will talk briefly about our plan for winter sports.
So thank you, Dr. Spence. After much consideration and discussion with colleagues from across the Commonwealth and other key stakeholders, we've decided to allow winter varsity sports to begin as early as Wednesday, January sixth, with tryouts. In support of this occurring in the safest manner possible, several changes have been made to our return-to-participation plan. They include, but are not limited to, requiring all coaches and players to participate in health screening conducted by the certified athletic trainer at each school prior to entering the school facility. This screening includes the use of the health screening checklist, temperature and visual checks by the trainer. In addition, team size has been lowered, and new practice restrictions and guidelines, such as the wearing of face coverings, locker room use, regular wiping down of shared equipment, and being assigned to smaller groups to limit potential spread, will be initiated. With the shortened season, the Office of Student Leadership will reduce the number of contests and limit to only competition between beach schools until the postseason. In addition, to best ensure the health and safety of our student athletes and coaches, we are not allowing participation in outside club teams during the selected varsity season. Finally, no spectators will be allowed, but spectators can view all games conducted in the school gym by purchasing a subscription screening service for a minimal fee. Notably, adherence to these requirements will be monitored by the athletic trainer, the student activities coordinator, and school administrators. Instances of positive viruses or transmission or failure to adhere to these guidelines may result in a suspension of team activities for a portion of or the duration of the season. Over the next few weeks, we'll be monitoring and assessing winter sports in preparation for opening up conditioning for fall sports at the high school level to determine the ability to allow for middle school winter season too, and for the fall season for both JV and varsity programs at high school that begin in early February. Our plan is to provide the board with our recommendations in the January twenty-sixth school board meeting. At this time, I'm turning the presentation back over to Dr. Bergen to wrap it up.
This concludes the formal presentation by the administration. We would like to thank the physicians who are listed on this slide for their advice and counsel, really, over the last nine months, and in particular, in preparation for your December fifteenth board meeting, and, and multiple conversations over the holiday break, and in helping to prepare this presentation, as well as the research brief you all received in the last several days. These physicians listed on the screen are, I believe, all four are with us. So Dr. Lee Roland here to my right, Dr. Ben Fickenshire behind me to my right, Dr. Heidi Best, and behind Dr. Best is Dr. Mitchell, Doug Mitchell. Not with us today is Dr. Lindsay due to a prior commitment, but she is, as Dr. Spence made in his comments, fully aware of the presentation today and supportive of the phased approach as we've described it. So we would like to open the floor up to your questions for staff who is present. All of our chief officers are either in the room or just outside in the hallway, plus all of our directors are online on Zoom. Should we have any particular departmental questions? We're prepared to answer any of them for you. And of course, you may very well have medical questions you want to direct to the four physicians who are present with us.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Bergen. And Madam Clerk, I'll continue, I'll rely on you for our two members participating remotely. Thank you.
All right, colleagues, looks like we'll start with Ms. Owens.
I guess my first question is, prior to our next meeting, or at our next meeting, what are the chances that Dr. Lindsay will be available to, to answer questions directly? And I appreciate the doctors who are here, and I will have questions for them, but in terms of having Dr. Lindsay's words represented without her presence and without being able to ask questions, is that going to happen prior to us making a vote?
So I, two, two thoughts. One is, so I anticipated that question, so I asked her that when we spoke this morning. She, she wasn't committal to being available next week at our board meeting, but she was going to try to be available for the workshop and was going to get back to me. And I would just say, representing her words, I, I read verbatim to her what I was going to say she had shared with me, and she said that she was very comfortable with me sharing that. So I just want to make sure we're clear about that, so.
Okay, thank you. And then I, do I get to? Okay. And this is for, I guess, any of the doctors who feel comfortable. Could one of you all talk about the new COVID strain that we're seeing coming and thoughts about what effects we should be expecting as, as in terms of community spread, in terms of children, and in terms of what we're seeing across the, you know, the different states and different countries with their recent school closures, when we were relying on those countries' reports of their schools being open?
That got pointed to me because of my infectious disease background and, and work with virology.
Welcome back, doctor.
Thank you. Let's put it in a little perspective here, as we talked about a new variant strain. It's been identified, this is what viruses do. This is not a unique, this is not unusual, it's not unexpected. It's what viruses do. Replication of viruses is not a perfect copy every single time. There are mutations that occur throughout time. From the surveillance that's happening of complete sequencing of the RNA of this virus, last I saw, four thousand different strains have been identified, four thousand different types of mutations have been identified. So that's sort of a level setting of what does this mean? As I have reviewed the, the data and the information so far, what is known is an assessment that it appears to spread faster. And that's in, in exact science, I think, because we have underlying spread already, and we've got varying levels of compliance with mitigating things, so that's a very inexact science. But because it's become a predominant strain primarily in southeast England, it's thought to spread faster, not a perfect science. There is no evidence so far that it has worse outcomes. That is pretty clear. They're not seeing worse outcomes just because of that strain. So spread's easier, not more lethal, not more deadly than, than the strain that we're dealing with right now. I read in detail, I read there was some modeling saying, oh my gosh, we shouldn't open schools. That was a modeling study that's not even been peer-reviewed yet. We'll go ahead and address that right off the bat, which means it's not had second eyes and third eyes to say, yeah, we agree with their findings. I read it. I, I disagree with some of their assumptions in that. For example, they lumped in their, in their modeling of how fast it might spread in schools, they lumped zero to nineteen altogether. And we know from the data so far that zero nine is different than ten to nineteen, and so it's really not a fair assessment to sort of put it all together. So there's, there's a variety of things to see how that publication may pan out in the long run. So that's, that's, that's where we stand. Can we predict? We haven't been able to predict anything with this. Okay, I'm not going to make any, any false predictions there. Is it going to spread likely? But what we know so far is the lack of worse outcomes of that strain. Again, many of those predictions were done too based upon lack of mitigating measures, and we're doing those now. And we're doing them well with a fantastic plan to have the assessment teams come in and watch for those mitigating factors and give guidance and, and assessments, very similar to what we do in a hospital setting for anybody that's aware of it. Sort of outside the, but those were my notes and comments I wanted to make, was that when you describe the team, the assessment team, we do it every day in the hospital. Somebody that's walking into the COVID unit has somebody watch them gown and go up to make sure they did it right. And when they come back, they have somebody watch them take it back. And when they come back, they have somebody watch them take it back off to make sure they did it right and they didn't contaminate. It's that oversight, it's that inspection, it's that non-punitive education to keep and make sure that things are going well that we do in hospitals all the time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Felton, and then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. Dr. Spence, in your question that you gave about not being able to call us back if things happen, what are the indications that would have to show for you to close the school or to shut the school? And what would be happening? Because right now, we are looking at the numbers that are already high now. So, what would you have to see that too this going on in the school that you would have to close it down without calling us together?
Well, we would make that decision in consultation with the Health Department, but there are a couple of things that would be assessed as school impact measures that I think the Health Department would talk about as school impact measures. And so, one of those would be absenteeism, for example, like we would do with the flu. And we've had that conversation before, where if you have high absenteeism, you may have to close that school. Quarantining, if we have to quarantine, we can do that by classroom. We've been doing that. So, we did have a number of classrooms that were quarantined when we were open even earlier. And so, if you got to a place where you were quarantining more classrooms than was sustainable, if you have staffing issues, if you have issues with being able to staff. So, one example that I've been using in talking to people about what staffing issues mean, I have a colleague who has a school that had a holiday party, faculty holiday party, and they weren't masking. And so, a significant number of staff in that building became positive because of that, because of their failure to adhere to some normal mitigation. And in that scenario, that would be a school. Now, were they a little bit fortunate in that case because it was right before the holiday and they got a quarantine time in after that? But were that to happen during the middle of a term, you'd have to close the school. You'd have to go to virtual in order for those teachers to continue to teach in quarantine. If you looked at, we had an instance I'm aware of where we had a night custodial crew that had to quarantine because they weren't following our expectations. And if we have in our custodial services, fill teams that could come in and work where those happen, and we were able to do that in this instance, but if we were to not be able to do something like that, we weren't able to have a night custodial team do the cleaning routine that's expected for our schools in the middle of this pandemic, that would be a situation where we would have to advise closing the school, right? And until we were able to properly clean the school. So, there's any number of ways we would look at school impact. But I think generally, you would just look at the burden in that school. And the other thing that I know we've talked with the Health Department about would be their assessment of burden on infection control. And so, one of the things that Dr. Lindsay asked me in our conversation over the break was, well, you know, if we came back to you after you're open and we said, we think you need to close this elementary school because there's just high burden, like it's putting too much burden on the Health Department because you've got too many cases, would you close the school? And the answer was yes. If your recommendation is we close the school because of burden on infection control from the Health Department, that would be an example of when we would close the school.
Okay, but this is still part of my question one. So, you use the word burden, and I understand how you're speaking, but for the listening audience that's hearing what we are saying, to clarify, burden, would it have to be two classrooms shutting down? Would it be five teachers that's been exposed? Or, we don't know. So, it depends on the school itself?
Yeah, exactly. And that's really one of the key points, Mrs. Felton, is we're looking at it on a classroom by classroom and a school by school basis versus, so if you had a school that you felt, okay, there's a lot of cases here, it's overwhelming the ability to contact trace in that community. We need to close that building, and the Health Department's requesting that. That doesn't necessarily mean you have to then close all of your buildings because you may not see any of that in any of your other schools. And so, that's kind of the key point when we talk about looking at school impact measures alongside community transmission measures and taking all of that in context. In terms of burden, there isn't a bright line. Like, there's no, well, if we have five classrooms in quarantine, we should close the building because we may be able to successfully have five classrooms in quarantine that may be related to five individual and unrelated cases, which isn't imposing a significant burden on infection control in that community, right? And so, but that's different than if you all of a sudden had an outbreak of some significant scale where the Health Department said, we need you to shut down.
Okay.
I mean, it's really, it's a case by case conversation. I don't know, Mary, if there's anything you would elaborate on that? I know Mary works closely with the Health Department epidemiologists and contact tracing, so she may be able to elaborate a little bit.
Good evening, everybody. Just to kind of branch off of what Dr. Spence said, the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, this is not uncommon for us to look at any type of contagious disease outbreak in a building and how we're going to go after it. It's individualized to that building. There isn't a set criteria, Ms. Felton, for us to close a building, but we will work closely with them. There can be some cases where you may see some classrooms out, like Dr. Spence said, but there isn't anything that we can give you specifically to tell you that Dr. Lindsay will give a recommendation to close a particular school. So, it's important that we don't communicate that, and it's important that they know that we're working with the Health Department on that decision-making. Did anybody have any particular question related to that? I think Dr. Spence explained it well.
Well, I just have to say, I do appreciate Dr. Spence and your health team coming forward. As Dr. Mitchell has said, these are unprecedented times and things are just not moving like he would predict. You cannot predict from one day to another. And I'm just aiming at hoping that we'd be more transparent with the community, which I know that that's there, I know we are seeing it. And I guess the language that we use will be very, should be efficient for the people to understand. That's why I asked you to define burden. My second question, my second question is, I guess, to Dr. Robertson, you mentioned about the athletic and bringing sports back. And I hope I'm answering this correctly. I know that the national teams have created a bubble they had before they played basketball, football, whether, they created a bubble within their system, and yet, they saw COVID happening within the bubble. What are some of the specific that we are going to do with our sport team that's going up, that we are calling that sports? Can you help me with the audience understanding of that?
Yeah, so beyond what I already shared in the earlier slide, some of the other things we're going to do is normally in a winter season, take basketball, for example, as one practice is ending, the other team is on the floor stretching. That will not happen. We will have a break between basketball practices where the gym area will be cleaned. In a normal basketball season, there is no, the balls are rolled out and the kids play. We'll have wipes to regularly wipe down the basketballs in between, in between practices and during the practice. Every kid will be wearing a face covering, except when they're engaged in activity with each other. So, for example, in basketball, sticking to that sport, if I'm engaged in a three-on-three drill or a five-on-five drill, I'm not going to be wearing my mask. But if the practice is over and I'm shooting free throws, I'm wearing a mask. If I'm standing on the sideline waiting to get put in, I'm wearing a mask. If I'm riding a stationary bike, I'm wearing a mask. In wrestling practice, we're putting our teams in pods of four. And those four kids are going to be the only kids that wrestle with each other for the entire year. And when I'm not wrestling with one of those kids and sitting on the side or a stationary bike, I'm wearing a mask. Gymnastics, when I'm participating on an apparatus doing my drill, I'm not wearing a mask. But if I'm standing on the side waiting to do my drill or chalk in my hands, I'm wearing a mask. Swimming, same thing. If we're swimming in the pool, you're not wearing a mask. But if you're standing on the side waiting for your lane to open, you're wearing a mask. Locker room use is going to be restricted and monitored. All the practices will be monitored sporadically by either the athletic trainer, the student activities coordinator, or the school administrator. So, we're in essence, we've really tightened down our health and safety mitigations. We have our own little bubble thing going on too, because we're only going to compete against beach schools. And by only competing against beach schools and not allowing kids to participate in club teams, we're doing our very best to create a bubble atmosphere for the regular season.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. And while you're standing there, you mentioned a fee for subscription. Is that for the parents as well?
Yes, and so, we're doing a streaming service, and the fee is $14.95 per month or $69.95 for the whole year. So, in essence, if a parent and a, if two parents went to a basketball game, they can get this subscription fee for the whole month and watch all the games from the comfort of their own home via live streaming. So, it's a nominal fee, and that allows, again, that covers the cost of getting the streaming service up and running in the schools.
So, is this taking the place of buying the ticket going to a game? Is that?
Well, we're not going to allow any spectators.
I know that, but.
But yes, ma'am. I mean, financially, yes. It's taking the place of that, but there is a cost associated with it because it's through a third-party vendor. And so, that's why we have to charge a fee. But it really, ultimately, what I think Dr. Robertson was hinting at or alluding to is if you were to go to all of your child's games, you'd pay less than this. You'd pay more doing that than you'll pay for the subscription.
And see, that's how I wanted it to be, you know, explain it way to the public, this hearing, because, you know, my child, his game, and I have to pay subscriptions. So, understand it that way. It will be.
Yeah, it's a significant savings over the season.
All right, I have enough. You have a quick one, I'll wait. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Anderson, and then Mrs. Franklin.
I think this, well, I'll just ask the question, and whoever can answer it can answer it for me. I would like to know when we can expect to have the vaccination available for our staff in schools? And can you elaborate more on that? You know, I think you mentioned it earlier, but it was just a brief mention, and I'd like you to elaborate a little bit more.
I did mention it earlier, and right now, what I can tell you is we're planning, and they're in the early phases of rolling it out for the tier-one personnel. I told you that our nurses have the scheduled time currently, but our ability to be able to plan for when it's going to occur for more school-based personnel is not developed yet. We continue to work with the city and the Department of Health on that. We meet regularly to describe it, and we'll update you when we have more information.
Is that something that we could push for?
We are.
Okay.
Mr. Freeman meets regularly with the city, and he understands what our expectations are in terms of what we hope would happen. You know, the CDC recently issued, a couple of weeks ago, guidance on the phases for vaccination. And if you saw, their committee, which oversees that recommendation, did put all staff in education, so not just teachers, but anybody who's responsible for education in what they call Phase 1B. So, that was sort of right behind the first phase, which is the people who are getting vaccinated now. However, as we came to find out, that is a recommendation that goes to the states, and then the states review that and make their own determination. So, we understand that they are right now making those final decisions, and we certainly have been communicating that through the city, which is working directly with that state task force on vaccination plans.
Okay, thank you. My next question has to do with the change in mitigation that seems that you're recommending. So, what I'd like to know is, are parents, are we going to be a little more lenient on parents who say, you know, I made the decision according to what the mitigation standards were back in July? I made this decision. In fact, I think we told our parents by December 18th they had to choose for second semester. Are we going to be a little lenient for that, for these parents who say, now you've changed the mitigation? You've changed these standards? Where is that going to fall for these parents who say, I'm just not comfortable with my child going to school right now in the middle of red, red situation going on?
Right. I think, I mean, the answer to that is yes, and we'll approach it similarly to how we approached the December 18th deadline, which would be if you all were to approve this recommendation and we move forward, that if a parent did have that concern, they would contact their school principal and make them aware of their desire for their child to either be virtual or express their interest in their child coming back to school. We would anticipate both would happen. And the same sort of parameters that existed in that initial round would exist here, right? So, if I wanted my child now to go back to school, because I know you're coming back, it would be based on space available. And if I didn't want my child to come to school and I wanted them to remain virtual mostly at secondary, that will work without a lot of complication because we have the concurrent teaching that's happening in many cases. However, there will be some cases where that may require a schedule change and/or placement in the VLC. And for elementary, it's virtually a lock that it will require a teacher change. And we'll just make sure we communicate that clearly on the front end, right? Because if they're already scheduled in with a teacher who is teaching face-to-face and is going to be in school teaching face-to-face, and very few of our elementary teachers are doing concurrent teaching, then we'd have to find a teacher who's teaching virtually to put that student into that classroom. And we'll just communicate that on the front edge. That's a decision a parent would need to make.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin, and then Mrs. Holtz.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to all the physicians that are spending their time and efforts with us. And I just had a quick question just after Jessica had asked the chair question. As the strain does mutate, the mitigations that you see that are being put in place, whether the strain is here or mutates to something else, do you feel like those mitigations will be sufficient, no matter where that strain is currently?
There's no reason to believe that the spread or mechanism of spread would be any different. It all has, the increased spread has to do with how it attaches or where it attaches or how it enters the cell, those sorts of changes. It doesn't have to do with changing it to a smaller droplet spread or farther dispersion or anything like that, I think is the best way to answer that.
Okay, so you don't think that we need to continue to change the mitigation strategy as it mutates? Or do you feel like what we have in place right now will be sufficient?
I think from what we know today, the variant strain does not change our mitigation strategies. As we've seen over the last nine months, every day, we learn something new. I'm not saying we're not going to change those. I'm saying on what we know today, there's no reason to change those. There's a slight difference in that wording there. What we're saying today, does that apply a week or a month from now? I don't know. New data, new science, new information will guide those decision-making.
So, we just continue to monitor and make sure that we're updating as we see fit, okay? And then, I just have one other question. In terms of the subjects that are being taught virtually, now that we have some testing that has gone on for one or two cycles, I should say, are we seeing that there are any particular subjects that are doing just as, you know, just as, I guess, ability-wise, the testing is just as good virtually as it would be in person? I'm just curious if there are any particular subjects that are finding that, that you're finding that are working just as well virtually?
It's a good question. We'll probably know a little bit more about that after SOL testing this, in the next few weeks. I'll indicate on the front end, it's going to be very difficult to do comparative analysis on SOL testing in the next few weeks because we're going to have substantively fewer students taking those tests because a waiver for that's been provided this year. However, we may know a little bit more to answer that question. The reason I would say other subjects it's difficult to ascertain is because we don't have division-level data collected on those other subjects. We have the marking period grades that the teachers give, which are based on their formative and summative assessments. And so, we could look at some point, subject by subject. I don't know what value we'd get in it at the moment, but we could look at some point, subject by subject. And as we move forward, you know, and we're thinking down the road, you know, future years, what are some of the subjects where virtual learning seems to really be effective? I think that would be one of the things we would try to figure out with our teachers and make those recommendations.
Okay, for now, Mrs. Holtz, and then Mrs. Riggs.
Oh, thank you very much. I wanted to, I have actually four questions, but I'll.
but I'll begin with the first slide that Dr. Bergen had. He talked about, uh, socialization. Well, that's a picture that is not realistic at all. And I've mentioned this before on some of the comments. Uh, how does he feel that children are going to be socializing? They're six feet apart, they have a mask on, they get, they have no discussion really within the classroom. They're not working in small groups. They're walking six feet apart in the hallway and in the, the same distance in the lunchroom. So today, to say that we're going to get back face-to-face because kids are missing out on socialization is ridiculous. Um, they're not playing out on the playground together. In fact, we had several stories from parents where kids were penalized because they did play with one another on the playground. So, w- w- why are we pretending that we're going to come back to school so kids can socialize? In fact, I believe if somebody has a problem, it might make it even more difficult for them. Uh, think of a child that goes in there thinking, nobody's talking to me, I don't have any friends, and why are they ignoring me? Because I can tell you from somebody in my family that was face-to-face, and also from other parents that I have talked to, it's, 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 you're not socializing is what I'm saying. So I think we're painting a wrong picture. I'm also disturbed that nobody seems to be expressing the fact that we now have a COVID variant, a new strain of this virus, and we're working with old data. We really don't have enough data on this new strain to make, uh, you know, all these summations. So we wanna get rid of the color scheme, or the red and the yellow and the green? So are we saying we're just gonna give up on it and ask the Virginia Beach Department of Health to make the decision on whether our schools should open? Uh, like, what kind of, uh, what kind of criteria are they gonna have? What's the benchmark for, um, when schools will close? Or what will it take? What, what, once we open the schools, who will make a decision on whether a school should close, or a school should be quarantined? So I'll finish with that question, but I do have others. Can somebody answer that?
Ms. Holtz, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to answer your questions. You, you had a few and a few statements, so I'm gonna try to figure out, you know, if I don't answer them directly, I guess, just let me know. So, uh, first, um, to the last, I, I think we did speak at some length already about, um, what, uh, what things we might be looking at if we were talking about, you know, needing to quarantine a classroom? Uh, what level, uh, burden in the school might rise to, or impact on the school might rise to, um, uh, needing to close the school, and that would be looking at things like, uh, student absenteeism, or the ability to staff, staff absenteeism. Um, that would be looking at things like, uh, multiple, uh, um, transmissions that, that create difficulty in contact tracing within that specific community. Um, and you might see that in a school versus in any number of schools. And so you would wanna close that school, but not necessarily close all schools. Um, so I, I think that answers your last question. I know Dr. Mitchell spoke about the variant strain, and if you've got specific questions, uh, for him, or, or any of the physicians or the health department about that, they can try to tackle those again. Uh, I'm not gonna do that. Um, and then relative to the idea of socialization, I, I'm just gonna, uh, respectfully disagree. Uh, none of us have, have said that school would look like it looks pre-pandemic. Um, none of us have said that there won't be changes and challenges for kids, you know? Kids, um, do have to wear masks, they are seated at least three feet apart. Um, but there are things that are, um, real about being in a classroom with your peers. And, uh, for example, you said there's no small group instruction. That's not true. We actually have accounted for small group instruction. Um, yeah, with the way that we've arranged and organized the classroom and are using plexiglass barriers, uh, we've been able to account for that. We've been able to account for recess, even though we do ask them to stay distance if they have their masks off, um, they, if they have their masks on, they can run around and play. Um, uh, I, I'd speak to you as a father and tell you, my, my son's, uh, reported experience in third grade was that he was very glad to be back with his classmates, and that the being in the room interactions that they can have, the responsiveness that they can have to each other's questions and comments was very important to him, and he was happy to have that back. And we've heard that from certainly other parents and students as well. I- is it the same? Of cour- of course, it's not the same. And, and please don't misconstrue, we're not pretending that it's the same. Um, but I also don't think that it is, um, there is no value or benefit to students being in a classroom together with one another. And in addition, there's more, uh, value than just the socialization. Uh, and so I would, you know, certainly that is a part of it, but there are also the value of the services that we are able to provide in school that are more difficult to provide outside of school, the value of the interaction between the teacher and his or her students, um, that is more difficult to do virtually, the ability for a teacher to assess that a child is having challenges right in that moment academically, or socially, or emotionally, and to assess that and address that while the child is with them in school. Things that we can't do when, when that child is sitting in a screen, or has their screen, um, off, or isn't engaged at all in the virtual learning. Um, so I do think there are benefits. I mean, I, not do I think. I know there are real benefits to having children in school, and, and presumably, most of us would agree with that, but I, I certainly, uh, take your point that it doesn't look the same as it, um, has looked in the past.
Well, even though the kids don't have severe cases of the, uh, the virus transmit infection, and we have to consider that the children are carrying and transmitting this virus to adults, and our teachers are these adults, and I think we need to also consider them, you know, as well. But, uh, I'm, I'm not pleased with this.
Finally, coming to that, I think we have.
Data to the evidence, which suggests that that is very low. Uh, that risk of transmission is very low in our schools with proper mitigations in place. And that's what's driving our, our thinking and our recommendation, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Holtz, thank you. Mrs. Riggs, and then Mrs. Manning.
Can you add Ms. Milnick to the queue?
Done.
Okay, so, um, I know that, uh, you said that you were gonna give the, um, parents an opportunity to look at changing their option. What about the teachers?
Well, I, I think.
Because that's one of the questions that people aren't asking, so I want to ask about the teachers.
Sure, I'm sure they are.
Especially with the cases rising.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm sure they are, and, um, I think I would say we would approach that the same way that we've approached it in the past, which is, you know, we've, we've had teachers who've indicated a preference. We've had teachers who've said, I would like to teach virtually, or I would like to teach face-to-face, and we have worked to accommodate those who we could, and there are some who we would not be able to. Um, and so, um, that would be a conversation between the teacher and their supervisor to talk about, well, I think my preference is changing as a result of this, and there's their way to accommodate that, and then we would have to look at the schedules. It's gonna be driven by student scheduling. That was, as, you know, that was the big conversation that came up when we first did all this, and we said, express your preference, and we were hopeful we could meet everybody's preference based on the number of students who were requesting option one, option two, and we even talked about this a little bit after the fact, reflecting that we, we should not have, um, tried to indicate to teachers that we, we thought we could accommodate you. Because what we should have said is it's all gonna be driven by student schedule. We're gonna do our very best to accommodate you, but student schedule dictates where we need teachers. And, and this is gonna be the same scenario. So if we have, uh, a run on, uh, students who want to be virtual, uh, if we were to open school in this environment, and we had teachers who then wanted to teach virtual, and we could match that up, we would do that. But if we didn't, we, we wouldn't, and if we had more who wanted to come back, we may need teachers to come back. So we have to drive that through, um, through the scheduling. A- and I appreciate and understand that some teachers will say, well, I just don't wanna come back right now. But, again, if the evidence suggests that the transmission rates is, are low in our schools, that the mitigations are working, that's not a, a science-based desire not to come back, right? And if they have specific health issues, we, we should already be aware of them and have been working with them to accommodate those needs. If we've missed one, if they didn't tell us about it because they weren't as concerned, and they're more concerned now, they have the opportunity to talk to their supervisor about that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning, and then Mrs. Milnick, you're on next.
Thank you, and I concur with Dr. Spence regarding the socialization issue. Um, as a parent of two Virginia Beach students who've only seen the inside of a classroom for two days in ten months, I can tell you that being with other people, just being in a classroom with other people, will make a world of difference, being able to communicate and dialogue with your teacher. Um, I know that that will make a drastic difference, especially for the, the mental health of our children, so I fully support that. Um, I have a question again, and thank you to all the, the doctors who volunteered your time. We can't thank you enough for, you've done so much research and given us so much information and data, and I read every single bit of it and study it, and thank you so much for that. Um, I would like to ask each one of you, um, if you support the plan that is being recommended by our administration? Yes?
Yeah.
So, I'm, completely? Okay, so I'm, I'm just indicating for the public who can't see us right now that all four doctors, Dr. Rollin, Dr. Fickensher, Dr. Best, and Dr. Mitchell, all four have stated that they fully support this plan that's been presented by our administration. So that, that means a lot to me. Um, thank you for that. Um, and then just one question, I, I've gotten a lot of questions.
May I take a second to, to just be clear about something with that too? Because I do want, um, to note again, because it's been a while, the, the sort of, uh, field and expertise of the folks. We do have, in addition to pediatricians here, we also have adult physicians here.
Right.
Who are aware of and considering and thinking about how this impacts adults and what transmission might look like, and how we can do this safely. So I know because of seeing it out on, on social media, these are just a bunch of pediatricians who only care about kids. Well, first of all, there's nothing wrong with caring about kids, and then second of all, they're not just a bunch of pediatricians who only care about kids. They've got a wide range of expertise. Um, they represent leadership in the hospital systems here. They represent, uh, leadership in emergency medicine and, uh, on COVID Task Force and healthcare. They represent leadership at the state level, uh, on, on reopening Task Force with the American Academy of Pediatrics. I mean, these are, I mean, I, I'm not trying to toot your horns for you, but these are, uh, these are, are people with some street cred in the medical community, and, um, and that is why we've been relying on their advice. So we didn't just go out and kinda find a couple of people we thought would agree with us.
Yeah.
Uh, and I just wanna be clear about that, because it's been painted a little unfairly in social media, and I think that people should be thoughtful about that.
Thank you. I think that's a great point. That's a great point. Thank you. Um, and then just my last question. We've gotten a lot of questions over the last several days regarding SOL testing, and I just wanna clarify, if, um, if someone does not want to have their child, um, go into a school for SOL testing this week, they do not have to, correct? They can take it at another time, um, and they won't be penalized. Is that correct?
That's accurate, and we would encourage anybody in that position to contact their school counselor to verify that it is not something they need to do now.
Okay.
Uh, there are some students who may need a verified credit, and they may only have one more opportunity after this to get that verified credit, and so we might encourage that student to go into the building and try to get that verified credit taken care of, but there still would be another opportunity. We don't want to jeopardize graduation for our child, so.
Right.
I, I, I don't wanna blanket say they shouldn't go in. They should contact their counselor and talk about it.
Okay.
And, again, I would, I would, uh, say, we have a very good plan in place for very small class sizes for SOL testing. And I'll also point out, because I think pe- people forgot this, that even when the governor closed schools in March, he left in place a provision for students to come in small cohorts for standardized testing. So this isn't something new. This is some, I mean, we didn't, you know, develop this. We, we have been doing standardized testing since the schools were closed in March.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Milnick, and, and then I guess I'm on, and we'll go with the next round after that.
I have two, I have two questions. The first, um, Dr. Mitchell mentioned that he can't make any predictions about COVID, um, and that the medical profession, um, learns something new every day regarding COVID. Um, so in, in fairness to our adults that staff our school buildings, I can understand why there's apprehension with returning face-to-face. Um, so my question is, what do we plan to do if we have an influx of teacher resignations? Um, or again, what do we do if we have, um, a lot of teachers that contract COVID and we're in need of substitutes? Or just, how do we fill these positions since we're already behind to begin with?
Um, I'm thinking Mr. Mira's gonna wanna come in and talk with you about, um, what we're doing there relative to, um, substitutes, and how that's been working for us, and, um, what we're doing in terms of hiring.
Yeah, that's a tough question. Um, that's a big what-if question, and we're gonna do the very best we can. We continue to hire. Uh, we have, uh, some students that just graduated in December, but I'm gonna tell you, I looked at the numbers yesterday, and it's still, with that, that seventy vacancy is, we're right in there. That's what's instructional. With the classified, we are looking at some exciting things, trying to encourage other employees, uh, like for custodial, uh, the custodial vacancies, because I think somebody brought it up last time, and we pulled a team together and we brainstormed. Uh, we came up with the idea of trying to allow our current employees, bus drivers, so other classifieds, to work in that capacity to fill in as custodians. Uh, Custodial Services, uh, is working on a training program. So it's like a win-win for our current employees, or our custodians. If they're a day custodian, uh, they wanna make some extra hours, we're, we're working on that. It's not, we're not ready to release it yet, uh, but we're very close. I just talked to Ed Jones, who's, uh, the, uh, Acting, uh, Director of Custodial Services, and I said, I'd like to really get that out, up and running for the nineteenth. Dr. Spence is aware, approved it, FERL with the, uh, the finances, so we're doing everything we can. I, there's not a magic solution, uh, but we will continue to hire. We continue to hire substitutes. I was in here today. We had several folks, they're still coming in, people still wanna work. So, uh, you know, that's the best I can answer that at this point.
Okay, that's fine. And my second question is, um, I'm very concerned about the, um, the drop in academic performance. Um, how do we plan to address that drop with our students who will remain in the option-two status?
Hello, Mrs. Milnick.
Dr. Rogers for.
Yes, this is Dr. Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Uh, we are, we are seeing the gaps in learning, and we have been doing that pretty much since we've been out of school. We continue to meet with teachers and plan with teachers. We have coaches, we have interventionists that continue to utilize our formative assessment data, as you saw today, to help shape the instruction that takes place in classrooms, especially at the elementary level. Uh, we focus on making sure that we have the right personnel around the table to have conversations with our, our school-based staff. The Department of Teaching and Learning works very collaboratively with docile staff, and we meet regularly with our school-based staff, uh, with our student response teams, with our, uh, interventionists, with our coaches. We, uh, spend a lot of time with professional development, especially at the elementary level. All of our coaches have been trained in letters, which is language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, which focuses on the science of reading. Uh, so we've been hitting all cylinders, making sure that we catch early and often those students who need support, particularly at the elementary level, and the same thing holds true at the secondary level. We utilize those formative assessments frequently, uh, to make sure that we are making monitor, making adjustments to instruction as well as assessment opportunities. So I don't think there are any stones that are being left unturned to make sure that we are capturing students early and often, to make sure that they're not failing. And, uh, the data that you saw at the, uh, high school level, where we have students, uh, who had, uh, not made the C-minus or better, we certainly watch those students and make sure that we're working with our, uh, school counselors, with making sure that we're working with our, uh, administrators, as well as with our teachers, our, uh, content-level coordinators continually work with school-based staff to make sure that we're, uh, monitoring students and engaging them in instruction and making sure that we are able to capture the gaps that exist.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Dr. Rogers.
Oh, I guess Mr. Mira wants to comment too, Mrs. Milnick.
I, I forgot, I wanna say, share one more really exciting initiative that we started about recruiting. Uh, the Saturday just before the holidays. Uh, the Saturday just before the holidays, we had a team from, uh, Transportation Services, Custodial Services, uh, and HR, and we were all there, and we did a blitz, we had two buses on Constitution, right, right at Pembroke Mall. We did a blitz, we had fifty-three, uh, we were primarily looking for custodians and bus drivers. That's exciting, that's fantastic, and then just us being together six feet apart, we brainstormed some ideas, and we're, and Dr. Spence, uh, authorized this too. We are talking about using our white fleet, we can't use the buses to advertise and market, but we're going to start trying to wrap some of our white fleet trucks for recruiting and stuff too. And I wanted to give credit, I, I stepped back up and I apologize if I shouldn't have, but the, the guys and ladies that were there spent all day Saturday, it was pretty nippy, but the enthusiasm of trying to come up with, you know, ways to recruit out at the box. Uh, so we're going to start doing these pop-up, uh, recruitment events. We bought a tent, we got the buses, we're, we're thinking about all kind of cool things, so I'll, I'll leave it at that. Uh, and, and if any of the folks that are, uh, that were involved in that, I want to absolutely thank them for helping with that, so anyway.
Thank you for that follow-up. All right, Dr. Rogers. So, I'm looking back to, um, and this is more a comment, but I want to be sure I'm on target here. It came up previously too, the option one versus the option two students is, am I correct in that there's about a five percent differentiation?
In the, uh, at the, with the third marking period grades? I, I thought, I believe so, I'd have to pull my, go back to it.
I just can't, can't come up with that slide.
It's, uh, give me one.
Oh, I think. Okay, thank you, and I see here, so eighty-one percent of option one and seventy-seven percent of option two earned a C or higher. And this has come up previously, and I just feel it didn't get enough attention. And I know ideally we would like to see no differentiation, but I do want to give a shout out to our teachers teaching virtually or concurrently, because I, I mean, you know, the, it's probably slightly outside a standard deviation, um, but, you know, it's close. I mean, it just, it just represents so much effort that most of us can't even comprehend, and I, I thought it was important to acknowledge that.
Well, we appreciate that, they have been working extremely hard, and we are extremely proud of those data, and we recognize that we still have some students that we need to capture.
So, also-
I also want to point out, if I may, uh, to Mrs. Melnick's question, we did, to additionally support our students in, um, elementary school, we did hire, uh, twenty-one additional, um, instructional support staff to help with PALS.
That's a lot. Well, so, speaking to elementary, because that's the second component of my academic question-
Sure.
It, uh, then, there is, the math versus the literacy, that was the biggest of any variance we saw tonight, right? Elementary level, the math, uh, benchmark was what, I mean, high teens, right? And literacy was low, single digits, or low, but five or six percent versus seventeen, eighteen percent. What do you attribute that to? I mean, that's a big difference between the two disciplines.
So, well, honestly, you know, it's easier to teach students when you have access to them regularly. I'm just going to be honest, I think, you know, COVID, there are a lot of, uh, things that I could share, and we've heard it for the last nine months, that we could say, um, it's correlated, I wouldn't necessarily say causation, but, uh, inevit- inevitably, direct teaching, there's no substitute for that. And our staff has, has done a tremendous job, uh, given the situations that we're in, but the reality of it is, um, it does have some impact on, uh, the gaps, and that's one of the concerns that we have, uh, relative to the data we have. And again, these data are formative, which means that it's, you know, not the end-all, be-all, it's a snapshot in time, and we do them, uh, quite frequently, and we make adjustments. And again, these data are at the beginning of the school year, and they reflect, uh, a direct instruction that did not take place as it would have normally toward the end of the, um, school year last year, and certainly on into the beginning of the school year this year. So, uh, the data are what the data are, and I would just suggest that, uh, professionally speaking, I would attribute it to, um, access, uh, to students on a more consistent basis in a face-to-face manner. There's nothing to replace direct instruction.
And as far as what makes math more challenging as part of it, I know just, you know, for, it's been decades now, like the introduction of math manipulism, is it, is it just something that's tougher to duplicate virtually? I mean, parents can continue to read to their children, and, and it is just math turning out to be a bigger challenge at the elementary level for?
So, I think math is, because math builds in the spiral at the elementary level, we've done a really good job, I think, at the elementary level, uh, doing formative assessments and changing the manner in which we do business normally, uh, to make sure that we're capturing students. But, uh, we notice the gaps, particularly, um, in, in the early grades with math, because it builds, and, um, we've been able to utilize our, uh, coaches and our instructional staff to help fill in those gaps. But again, um, to have an opportunity to have students have the discourse that you're able to do, uh, in a face-to-face manner, it's hard, sometimes more challenging to replicate in a virtual setting, uh, more so than you can in a face-to-face setting. But, uh, again, I, I think there are a lot of things that we could list, certainly as, uh, correlation, but not necessarily causation. Um, and, you know, of course, if you're able to see a student, um, struggle, uh, you're able to assist them a little better than you can in a virtual setting. Um, but again, I think, um, that the mitigations that we put in place to, to augment, uh, what's not happening, um, what's not able to happen as readily as we can in a face-to-face setting, uh, that, you know, the teachers have done a phenomenal job in making sure that we do so. And again, um, the decreases that we see in math, uh, are certainly, um, not surprising. Uh, they certainly could be worse, but I think our staff have, have done a tremendous job taking a look at what we have to do to adjust the practices in order to get the, the results that we have now. I do think that they could be better, and again, I think I'd attribute it to, uh, having the opportunity to have more access to students.
Okay, thank you. Is Mr. Freeman?
Oh, I have, I think, one for you, sir.
So, I want to ask about classroom ventilation, and are we at the point now with, uh, if a classroom has windows, do, are, do we have any windows painted shut, or have we already covered all that, and we know now that any classroom with windows can be opened?
There are windows that'll be secured, and they're not allowed to open, and, and that reasoning is behind, uh, other substances, so, for example, lead or something else that can get disturbed and be, uh, put into the environment. So, as we discussed, uh, back in September, when we talked about the risk benefit of opening windows, uh, the balance of risk is to not disturb those substances and leave those closed, and then look at, all right, look at our systems, our HVAC systems, are we doing preventative maintenance on them properly? Are we changing the filters to maximize the circulation of the air within those spaces?
Do we have any idea, are we, are we talking entire school buildings when you talk about, what is it, lead-based paint? Uh, what is the impediment to opening some of these windows? I'm still not clear.
Yes, uh, so we can get you the full details of, uh, whether it's lead asbestos or, or some other, but it's an environmental hazard that you don't want to disturb by breaking those, those windows open, and that's why they're closed.
So then a related question is, is, do we have any different strategies for classrooms that either don't have windows or have windows that can't be opened? In terms of anything extra we can add to, to, to just, in terms of air quality?
So, that's where we work on the flow of the HVAC system, to make sure the HVAC systems are operating properly and ensure the flow. So, in the, in the, so as we're talking about this, the other thing that we're talking about is the layered mitigations. So, uh, as we described in the beginning-
Swiss cheese.
Right, and you, you implement layers of mitigations. Um, and we've had five outbreaks, outbreaks meaning that it was transmitted from one person to another. Um, so the mitigations that we have in place are working, we continue to monitor, and this, this question came up before, that doesn't mean to say that we're done. So, nothing that we say, or we say that we learned something new every day, doesn't mean that we're done. We continue to monitor our mitigations and ensure that they are working. So, how are we monitoring that? We're, uh, traditionally up to this point, we're using our data of what the, uh, what we're learning during contact tracing, and now we're going to also be monitoring, are we actually implementing the, um, through the, uh, safety assessment teams, are our planned strategies being implemented as intended? So, they are working, so currently our mitigations that are associated with, uh, HVAC and our ventilation plan is working, but we continue to monitor it.
Okay, thank you. So, we're on to our second round of questioning, beginning with Ms., oh, guest doctor.
Can I say one thing about the HVAC that I thought was really interesting? Because we had extensive conversations as non-HVAC experts, and pediatricians, meaning on the state level. And what I learned, but you, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's not, if you can't open the windows, it's also just the airflow and air quality in the room. So, I thought that was interesting, because I always thought, well, open the windows, and then they also talked about, well, that can tax the HVAC system and make it run less efficiently. So, it was far more complicated than I know I realized. I thought, if you can just open up the windows, everything is good, but I thought that piece was, was interesting, where they, they said, you, you have to be careful doing that, but, I mean, your question is, is valid, but I, I was somewhat reassured that there's other things that really can be done to circulate the air besides the window piece.
Thank you. So, uh, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. Okay, I, I have a couple, but I'll do what I can do in this round, and I'll go back in. Um, with the safety teams, uh, which is something that I am supportive of and have been happy that we're moving in that direction, um, are there any plans for the safety teams to do spot checks, not only during the, uh, school day, but during our after-school sporting activities, et cetera, to ensure that those things are going as planned as well? Or is it only going to be during, uh, these normal hours? Because when we talk about, I don't know that we need them twenty-four seven, but we know we had custodial situations, and those may be after normal business hours, but they're not something that would be caught if we're not, um, kind of branching our safety teams out past normal business hours or before normal business hours.
So, uh, and, and Jack can feel free to elaborate, but, uh, the intention right now is not for them to be doing after-hours checks. We have custodial supervisors, like area supervisors, who are able to check and make sure that the custodians, the night teams are performing in their, their, uh, responsibilities effectively. So, we would expect them to continue to do that. As you heard Dr. Robertson say, the expectation would be that the student activity coordinators and other administrators would be monitoring practices to make sure that their coaches were, um, adhering to those expectations. Now, you heard, um, uh, when we were talking about the safety teams, the understanding is too, that if people had a concern, and they said, "Well, I don't think that's happening," that they can call the Office of Safe Schools, we'll collect that information, that information will be shared with the safety teams and with the principals of those buildings. Um, and that might trigger a need if we collected a wide swath of data that suggested that people weren't following this, or they were concerned about a school, um, that might trigger a conversation that we would need to have. Okay, well then we need to have a team that can go and do some night checking. But I think right now we want to leave it in the, the plan that we have and see if that's needed.
I guess the next one is, uh, for any of the, the doctors present. Um, I've been seeing some research about, uh, heart effects in student athletes who've, uh, had COVID, and I'm just wondering if any of the, uh, doctors here are familiar with, uh, those studies, and if there's any, um, anything to be, that we should be looking at with, uh, changes in hearts of student athletes who've had COVID.
Dr. Rowland, look at me again. Yeah, make sure it's the state level. Um, it, it, it started with the, the early understanding of the significant, um, heart effects and clotting effects in adults, and then it's, all right, do we need to look at the same thing in, in children? Clearly, as everything else in this disease process, it is much, much less severe in kids than it is in adults, for whatever reasons. Um, there is evidence that, um, there is, uh, needs to be watched and looked for in kids that have been infected. Uh, really, the guidelines right now are if, um, a student athlete has asymptomatic disease or mildly symptomatic disease, it's just a period of waiting to recover, uh, not much different than anything else would be done. If the child has a more severe, moderate, or severe course, then there's going to be more extensive monitoring, testing, and measuring to be done, uh, to safely be able to return that young athlete back to sports and activity. Um, that's, that's what we do with, with any factor of, that's reason for the sports physicals, uh, to monitor and do the best we can to predict who can safely compete and identify risk factors for those who should not be competing. Um, so, I don't know if I answered your question, um, yep, Dr. Rowland's got something to add.
I can just pipe in, um, we met on the state level with some cardiologists as well to sit down and say, "Okay, what do we do with our student athletes?" And so there are some national guidelines, and then we adapted them. So, we've got that on our school reopening webpage, and so our job is when an athlete is diagnosed with COVID to decide, well, is this mild or moderate to severe? Fortunately, almost all cases are mild, and probably, you know, some are going to go undiagnosed, but those kids are, are doing well. We're not seeing, um, what struck me with the conversation with the cardiologists that we had is that they said, "You know what, if we were looking at kids as closely, kids with influ-" not that COVID's influence, I'm not saying that, but if we looked at other viral illnesses as closely as we're looking at COVID in kids, we'd find myocarditis there too. So, it's not unique to COVID for children. Um, so they, they were, you know, fort- fortunately, kids have really done well. When we look at COVID in children, that's the thing that you're going to hear the most about, but when you look at the actual numbers, um, fortunately for us as parents and, you know, talking about bringing children back, they're, they're doing well with it. I hope that answers.
That was, that helped, um, and the, the studies that I've been reading have been more on, like, young college athletes. So, I, I understand that there's different levels to the effects, uh, depending on the age. It, it just makes me pause and, you know, be mindful of our, our high school athletes and making, just making sure that everybody has, uh, full information to make informed decisions, so. Um, I think that that's my two, so I'll go back in the-
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson, and then Mrs. Felton.
So, um, I realize that our doctors and, and our administration as well is using data that they've gathered. No matter what, our data is new, obviously, everything is less than a year old, okay? So, we all agree on that, that it's less than a year old, so everything's new. And we realize that this virus has changed, has changed our lives, but it, it has changed our perspective on, uh, wh- what we think is going to happen and what we've predicted is going to happen. So, but my point that I want to make now is that I read today, just today I read, and I'm going to read part of this to you, that, uh, it came from Education Week, and it said that reports, research released Monday by the National Center for Re- for Research on Education Access and Choice at Tulane University found that, for the most part, school opening, school reopenings in the fall did not appear to contribute to increased hospitalization rates due to COVID-nineteen. The finding adds to a growing body of evidence suggesting that schools did not play much of a role in fueling infections when, when community transmission rates remained relatively low. And so that's the part I want to, I want to really emphasize he- emphasize here is that some of this data that you're using also came from a time when transmission rates were low. Uh, we had our students in school, um, and we didn't have very many transmission rates, but it was also during a time when our community transmission rates were low as well, because we were following our, our red, yellow, and green, uh, category. So, um, it went on to say that, um, given recent spike in hospitalizations in recent months, policymakers should be cautious, because it may not be safe to reopen schools where the virus is already wi- widespread in the community. already widespread in the community. And then it went on to say, later on, reports, reports on a second study released in late December looked at Michigan and Washington, and it tested whether districts that offered in-person instruction this school year saw higher rates of COVID in the surrounding community as a result. Where COVID numbers were already low, schools didn't seem to contribute to the virus spread. But where pre-existing rates were higher, the risk of schools opening were higher too. So they, they basically said that once you get to a certain point of community infection rates, it does look like being in person is associated with, with the COVID spread in the community. So I just, I just want to bring that out and, and bring this to, to your attention. I realize that we're, we're trying to use the data that we, that we have so far. But our data that we have, especially for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we were in school in person and didn't have many transmission rates, but also it was at a time when our community spread was lower as well. Right now, we're higher than we've ever been. And, and that worries me, that we're, that we're thinking about bringing our students back when we're higher than we were in March. And even though you say, you know, according to all of the data that you have used, that I, I'm not questioning your profession, you know, your professionalism or anything like that. I realize that you're doing the best you can. We're doing the best we can too. We all are relying on data. But we have to realize that the data that we're using to say that we have low transmission rates is because the community has low transmission rates. And so I, I feel real uncomfortable right now in saying that we're going to bring students back when we're higher than we were in March, when, when everything stopped. And, and I want to make it clear to the public who's listening to me. As a, as a former teacher, I realize that the best place for students to learn is in the classroom. I, I'm not happy with virtual instruction at all. I realize that there are a few students who are actually doing well with it, but for the most part, it's difficult. And, and my specialty is early, early childhood education. Those children are really struggling. It's difficult to teach a kindergarten or a preschooler, you know, virtually. But it, it's difficult for all our students. But I just want to be very cautious before we make this decision about using data that was formed when the community spread was low. So I just, I have to say that. So I just, if you'd like to respond to that, I'd be happy to listen.
The point is valid. I think the difference in where we can sort of separate a little bit is that the data are very clear about the risk of transmission in the school setting is low. What that means is if you have higher incidence in the community, you're going to have a greater number of kids identified as positive and needing to be absent, needing to be identified as sick when they're there, needing to be excluded from school because of what's happened in the community. That does not necessarily relate directly to an increased risk of transmission within the school setting, does not directly relate to transmission between children, and does not relate to an increased risk of transmission from the child to the teachers, just because they're in the classroom. As we've seen so many anecdotal reports, the risk is the adults not doing the right thing when they're outside of work, when they're outside of the school setting, of having the holiday party when they should know better. Those are the risk factors, not from being in the school. We've seen that, if you can parallel it a little bit, we've seen that in the healthcare setting, okay? In, in our setting in pediatrics, we don't have the same number of hospitalized people as in the adults. But we see infected kids in the clinic every single day. And by, and we in CHKD have had, once we've done the right masking and goggles and that sort of thing, we've had no healthcare worker-associated infections from being at work. It, it all has to do with contact with people outside of work or sitting in the break room unmasked. And I believe that's pretty close to the same, even though they're dealing with adults walking the emergency room spewing forth massive amounts of virus. Using the right things, with the right PPE, masking, eyewear, the transmission rate to the healthcare workers is extremely, extremely low. There was, there are reports, certainly there have been many healthcare workers, that was early on, we didn't know, we weren't doing the right things with PPE, we learned how to do a better job of monitoring the PPE and doing it and that sort of thing. So I think all of that goes together to show that because it's greater in the community doesn't mean it's going to be a greater risk of transmission in the school setting. One of the commentary while I got the chance, and that is, as part of the leadership team at CHKD, and what we're seeing, the difficulty of overcoming is the fear. And the way you deal with fear is you give the real-life examples of this works, okay? That doctors and nurses are not getting infected, taking care of infected people if they're doing the right things. The question was asked also about the vaccine, when we might see it for, for teaching staff. I would encourage you all to start now as part of that planning of educating. Even in the healthcare, we're only having about 50% of our eligible people want to take the vaccine, and that comes from the fear of the vaccine. And so the more you can engage in those educational processes of the safety of the vaccine, the benefits of the vaccine, that starts of increasing the ground swell as you get the vaccine of increasing the acceptance of the vaccine when it arrives.
One more question for you, and it's of all of you. Have all of you been vaccinated already?
First round.
First round? All of you? Okay, great. I just wanted to double check. And that, that's great to know that you all feel comfortable in, in doing that. And whenever it's offered to me, I plan on doing it as well, so.
Absolutely, yes. I have my first round, and I get my second round in two days. Very excited about it. I just want to make one comment about mitigation strategies and healthcare providers seeing COVID patients. I, I see COVID patients every single day. I go to shift, I just worked a stretch of five, and it was plenty of COVID. I'm not wearing a hazmat suit, I'm not in some weird bubble. I have gloves, I have a mask, I have my goggles. I'm diligent about hand sanitizers. We're diligent about distancing strategies. So it's not some special amazing PPE that we have available to us in the hospital. It's, it's standard stuff available, and I think with appropriate mitigation strategies, you cannot get infected. I've managed to stay infection-free this whole time, despite seeing plenty of COVID patients. And then a, as far as schools, I think we just need to be cautious too when we just generically talk about transmission in schools. Certainly, age is a factor. And then Dr. Rowland gave a great presentation last time about specific mitigation strategies within the schools. And we noted that schools that don't have any of those measures that we've put into place here in Virginia Beach did have increased rates of transmission. So I think we need to consider that when we look at the data as well.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, Ms., Mrs. Felton and Mrs. Holtz.
Oh, yes, doctor. Welcome.
Hi, sorry. So I'm Dr. Ben Fickenshire, I'm an ER doctor, immediate past president at Chesapeake Regional, and was on the COVID team there. And I, I wanted to just kind of echo the same thing, because I think it's really important that, that you hear from more and more people who are face-to-face with COVID patients every single day, to get a, a sense of where our comfort level has come, which is completely different than where we were in March of last year. When we went to work, you know, I've got four children on the Virginia Beach City Public School system, and came home from, from work, and I didn't know what to do. I didn't know whether I needed to shower off in the, in the yard before going in the house? Did I need to burn all the clothes, you know, wear scrubs and, and wear them just once? We just didn't know at the time. Things have evolved greatly. And we, my group has 35 healthcare providers, each of whom, we don't segregate them out, they all see COVID patients, they all wear a mask and, and goggles and gloves and wash their hands. We've had two go sick since last March. Both of them definitively traced back to social gatherings where other people got sick that they were closely in contact with without mitigation in place. We've not had anybody that we've identified getting sick who have taken care of COVID patients every single day, even since we've turned up the, the notch on a, on community spread here locally recently. So I think that's important for you to hear, and I think that that is backed up by the data that we presented in pages six, seven and eight on the proposed plan, that suggests that we are all safer at work or in environments where mitigation is taking place and being enforced than we are in the other areas of our lives, save for complete social isolation in our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to say one other thing, because, you know, I like to talk, I guess, but, no, I, I think your point is very valid, and I thought about that and looked, what I did was go to, because it's, you know, difficult as this information is coming out to get firsthand information, so went to areas in the country that have high transmission and, and looked at what was going on there. And it was remarkable that they were not seeing it in the schools if they were mitigating. So I think that's an important lesson for us, that even in the areas of very high transmission, is your risk in schools of more cases coming in, yes, as Dr. Mitchell said, but is there transmission happening there? Not, not to the degree that would warrant the closure of schools. The other piece, looking at the community, community and the population as a whole. If you look at our area, we're in phase three, and people are out and about and doing whatever they're going to do. And so closing schools doesn't add anything to help the community. And so honestly, our kids, in many ways, there's been hints of that in the literature, but I don't believe I, there's anything in the data that we've given you, because we didn't feel it was solid enough yet. But there's hints that, you know, would you rather have your child hopping from household to household to be cared for with different adults who are, then their, but the bubble gets bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger? Or would you rather have them in the controlled, safe setting of a school where mitigation is being followed? I think we would all, you know, say the mitigation is safer, but your, your point is a good one.
I, I know that you all realize that we as school board members are between a rock and a hard place there here. We have a difficult decision to make, and we just want to make sure we've covered all bases. And I wanted to bring that information to you as well. And thank you, all four of you, for speaking about that to me and to the public.
Okay, Mrs. Felton. And then Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you. Dr. Spence, it's important that the listening audience and the community know that out of the four doctors that you have here today, Dr. Fickenshire, Dr. Best, Dr. Mitchell, Dr. Rowland, and the fifth that is not here, Dr. Lindsay, is an African-American, who you read her statement earlier at the beginning of the meeting, and how she felt about moving forward. And her key word was to move in phases. It's important that the community know that you had that African-American expertise doctor on this committee, because the African-American is one of the population that's very vulnerable. They need to know that you reached out on their behalf or your administration to make sure that that presence was there. I would like to commend all of the doctors. You have given us something that you can, cannot get back in this time. Thank you. And to those of you, Dr. Rowland, that, that it's up to my call, and we had conversations, and you took the time out to, to, to speak with me, patient, and I appreciate that. And you let me ask you the hard questions. We are, as school board members, we are between a rock and a hard place, because not only do we look enough for the students as well, we hear everything that you're saying, I'm getting calls every day. But I'd just like to ask this question, and framing around one of the last two school board meetings that we had, and Dr. Lindsay was here as well, and she spoke about the 22-plus percentage of African-Americans and the 12-plus percentage of Hispanics that, that are in our system, that could be more or less now. But my question to you, Dr. Spence, and to your administration, how many of those students have we not, I mean, other than them going to, being home school or private school or whatever, how many of those students have we not connected with? We've lost. And I use that word very cautiously, because I know how sensitive educators are when it comes to their students. And I know that the, the teachers here in Virginia City Public School are very passionate that about what they do. And I'll let you know, how many have been lost or disconnected from the system?
So, Ms. Felton, I can send the chart that I've collected from the schools, from all the schools that have noted, how many kids were no-shows at the beginning of the year and how many kids we have lost touch with up until this point? But I will tell you, at the high school level, I think the largest number was 20. Most of the numbers were in the low teens. Middle school were in the low teens, elementary were below 10. So I can send the entire board that spreadsheet, so you can all see the information. And it, it just goes to show the efforts that schools are making on a daily basis to stay connected. They're not waiting until the end of a marking period to contact Little Johnny. As soon as the teacher realizes that Little Johnny is no longer participating, there's conversations occurring between the teacher and the parent, or the teacher and the counselor, or the teacher and administrator, and then we are moving forward on contacting these kids. So I'm really proud of the effort that the schools have made, and I think you'll be pleased by the data.
And I do appreciate it. And let me make this clear. I, I know I called those numbers out for African-American and Hispanic, but let me make this clear, all students, every one of the students that's in this Virginia Public School is very important to me, all of them. And I need to know where they are, if they're not there, and how can we connect? Because my philosophy is, education is the greatest equalizer that we can give our students and our, and our children. And without that, we have failed them. And I really would appreciate getting an admission. Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Mrs. Holtz.
All right, thank you very much. Last week, we received notice that the vaccine is in our area and that our school nurses can deliver it to employees, especially to teachers. Can somebody give me an update on that progress? Like, how's it going? How many have received it?
Mary Shaw stepping forward.
What I'd like you to know is that I'm, been communicating throughout the holiday period with the immunization coordinator for the COVID vaccine for the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health. We've been working hard to get our school nurses vaccinated. They are still working on the EMS and, and some of the first tier. Our school nurses will certainly partner with the Public Health Department under vaccine clinics to help get our employees vaccinated. I greatly appreciate what Dr. Mitchell said about the vaccine. We got a lot of communication to do so we can get a higher percent of compliance. I talked to them today a little bit about it. They believe, at first, it looked like it was pretty far down the road, but they believe it's a lot closer. So I think things are coming together and, and organizing the vaccine administration across the city. So I feel really good about it and confident that we can get our employees access to this vaccine. Did anybody have any other questions?
Well, did you say that it has not yet been distributed in our schools by school nurses? Because I thought it was.
No, it has not, because remember, as Dr. Spence said, there is guidance that determines what groups get this vaccine. The first-tier groups, which is the first responders, EMS, and the different people in that group, and I'm separating from the healthcare workers, because the hospital's doing that, but the city is also offering it to some outpatient healthcare providers too. When that's completed, our school nurses will be next to receive it. And again, Dr. Spence said that schools are up, higher in the priority list. Again, we are still bound to what the guidance, it comes down to the local areas and what to do with that distribution of the vaccine. So I want to be very careful that I'm not stating something that isn't accurate. But I can tell you, there's, we are actively, I worked on it through the entire holiday period, making sure that our employees are on the radar, and we're going to be ready when they're ready to do. when they're ready to do this. Okay?
Well, I've read that it takes about a month for these antibodies to, you know, react in your system where, you know, the vaccine will do you any good, so I like people to take that in consideration when we're talking about opening schools, and also, there will be some teachers who will not, for whatever reason, be able to have the vaccine or to take it, and I'm wondering if they would be allowed to be virtual if they choose so.
I can't, I can't speak, I don't know if the physicians want to speak to whether or not it takes a month to, for the antibodies to become effective, so I'll let them address that first, and I'll answer your second question when they're done.
The only thing I can say, and I'll let the physician speak, is we know that there's a two-shot, there's two shots for the Moderna and the Pfizer. We know that the Pfizer is three weeks apart, and we know the Moderna is about a month apart, and you know, with vaccines, there is a time period that your body does have to build up some immunity once the vaccine is given, and they can speak to that more.
The latest data that I read suggested about after 11 days after vaccination, that you are starting to have some immunity. With the, with the first dose providing partial immunity, and then the second dose 21 days later, is what gets you to 95%. And I think that, so the points were taken, that yes, the vaccine's coming, it's not out yet, you're not instantly fully protected when you get your first shot, but you do shortly thereafter develop some, some partial immunity, and then with the second round, get to 95%. But I think it's important, then, to point back to the fact that the numbers that we've cited, the indication that, in the studies that I've, that I've read, suggesting that education workers are at no greater risk of contracting this virus than our control groups, those people who are working from home and engaging in community activities outside of work, that there's no increased risk of being in school, that you have to remember that all of those studies were, of course, done prior to a vaccine, so these were not with vaccinated populations. So it only layers additional safety and protection on top of what data would show is already a safe environment.
And Mrs. Holtz, specific to your question about who might take the vaccine and what that might mean in terms of teaching options, I would, I would suspect, and again, I'm not an expert, I'd have to lean into our folks in public health and Mary and others, but that it's going to be a fairly small group of people who can't take it for a health reason, and I know that that may exist, but that's going to be a fairly small number of people who can't take it. Now, there may be more people who choose not to take it, those who choose not to take it, you know, because they don't want to, they're afraid of it, you know, they're getting misinformation, that would not be a reason for them to elect not to then come to work.
This is Dr. Mitchell again, yeah, the, the medical reasons to not receive this vaccine are incredibly small. It's somebody that's had an overwhelming anaphylactic reaction, not just standard allergic reaction, an anaphylactic reaction to a previous vaccine or an injectable medication, and that, and that's it. That's the only reason. If you get hives, you can still get it. It's true anaphylaxis to a previous vaccine is the only reason not to get this vaccine from a medical perspective. Take it back to their own doctors, but that's, that's the current guidance right now.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to add one thing about the vaccine. We do need to be cautious about expecting the vaccine to be the cure-all. Again, I've worked in, since March, seeing COVID patients without the vaccine, and I stand here COVID-free, but even after the second shot that I get on Thursday, I still come to work, I have my mask, I have all of my mitigation strategies. Same thing with the flu season, I get my flu shot every year, and I'm not going to be all up in a flu patient's face without my proper PPE, so it's not going to be the cure-all. It does, like Dr. Mitchell just mentioned, adds another layer, but it's, it's not going to be the, the game changer.
Well, and I, and I think that's right, and if it's okay, if I would just say, I think that's also another compelling reason for us to be thinking about how and when we get kids back, because if we're waiting for herd immunity and vaccines to be, you know, we're all back to normal and going to stadiums for sporting events and concerts again, I mean, we're, we're not talking about, you know, weeks or even months, I mean, we're talking about a very long time, according to everything I'm reading at least, and, and we have to weigh that, balance that, you know, at least I have to weigh that, and then I'm going to ask you to weigh that and balance that in your deliberations against what we know, which is kids got to be in school. So, so, you know, just keep that in mind.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Holtz. Mrs. Anderson.
I have one more question, and it has to do with athletes. Some sports have closer contact than others. For example, wrestling is a real close contact sport. Basketball is pretty close contact as well. Do we have any way of testing those athletes to make sure that they're COVID-free before we begin? I, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I know that testing is, right now, you know, if I had symptoms, I'd have to actually make an appointment and wait, wait a couple of days before I can actually get in, from what I've heard friends of mine tell me, but.
So we're not planning to do any testing requirement for our athletes. We are, however, doing the health screening checklist prior to them entering the facility for any reason.
So checking their temperature?
Just like if you go to the doctor, same type of deal. You get the questions that you answer, you get a temperature check, get a visual inspection, and then you're good to go.
We do have thermometers for them to do a temperature check on a daily basis?
Yes.
With those students, okay? I just wanted to make sure what kind of medication standards we had for those, those students.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment about the testing availability. Back in the summer, when we were all having discussions, I think testing availability was pretty poor. There weren't any, at that time, I don't believe there are any urgent care centers that were doing testing, there was some very long seven-to-10-day result time lag on the PCR test through Centerra, and I'm happy to say that testing is available pretty ubiquitously, both on the rapid antigen testing and the PCR. So, for example, just I had a patient the other day at Centerra in the ER, PCR testing, in less than 24 hours, it was back. So I do think testing availability has changed significantly over the past couple of months.
Thank you. Anybody else, colleagues?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Actually, this next question is probably Dr. Rogers, I don't know, this is a question about the statistics that we got, it's on page five of my handout, somebody mentioned it earlier about the percentage of students who pass the class in option one or option two, and I'm just wondering if, if we factored in anything with the option one and option two pass rates about what students are in what group? Do we have students who historically perform at a different level, grouped more into option two, that weighs into the differences that we're seeing in these numbers, that if we tested all these same students in these two groups, but they were all getting instruction face-to-face, would we not see differences in there as well? Because when I, I'm looking at, like, the numbers for the African Americans in the K3 phonological awareness, the PALS testing stuff, and I see that even when we were all face-to-face, we were going the wrong way from 2018 to 2019, which says to me that we already knew that there were some issues there, and if we have those students more primarily in option two, does that factor in at all into the, the number of disparity that we're seeing in the option one, option two pass rates?
So I'm going to let Dr. Robertson answer the grade question, and I can fill in the gap, but I'll let you go ahead. Sure answer is yes.
So I think we need to be careful about any comparisons to this year and last year in terms of the marking period, and the reason for that is at the secondary level, the kids are on a four-by-four. So, you know, last year, they were taking six to eight classes at the same time, and now they're taking two to four classes, so completely different situation just from a scheduling standpoint. When we break our data down, we get it by gender and by subgroup, and what we are seeing is that within subgroups, whether it's option one or option two, we're seeing the same gaps existing. They just are more prevalent, and the bar is, is lower in the option-two kids, indicating that the virtual learning experience is a much more difficult experience for all students, and in particular, this, when you're looking at your subgroups, some of our subgroups are not performing as well. Along with the PALS and grades, you, one could argue, they're, they're a bit subjective, depending on who's scoring the PALS, or who is creating the course grade for the class. So we want to be cautious when we're making assumptions based upon those pieces of data. We want to look at other pieces, which is why we presented tonight the local assessment piece, as well as the marking period information.
So Ms. Owens, also, yes, there are far more students of color and economically disadvantaged students in option two than in option one, so that will impact that data. That will not impact the PALS data or the RI data, because that's being given across both groups. So, and you notice, we didn't do, that wasn't comparative data, we didn't say this for option one, this for option two, it was all student data, and so, so you'll have to look at that a little bit differently than the comparison between option one and option two for grades, okay?
Okay. And my next question is about some of the mitigations that we talked about on page five, with opening doors and windows when appropriate. I wanted to understand better about where we are able to do that and where we're kind of not able to do that, both in terms of schools specifically, and not, you don't have to say the specific schools, but the ones that we know we can't open windows in, that are older schools, are those also the same populations that we already know are more at risk from COVID, that also have higher risk factors of the ventilation, because we know we can't open the, the windows and whatever in those schools? And the doors opening, I didn't, maybe you guys can tell me more about it, I know that with the whole security stuff that we had prior to, doors open was like not a thing. Are doors open now a thing, particularly, I think, I think gym time, I think we put multiple classrooms of children into a gymnasium, we know that there's not windows in there, there are doors, I assume that having them open was a security issue, but is it now not, or are we enclosing all of them into the gym with no windows and no doors, and what are we doing with that?
So I'll answer that last part, and then I'll follow up with any that came before that. So from a doors-open standpoint, you, you mentioned the gym, so doors, no door should be left open unmonitored. So what that means is if there is an adult that's able to be there and monitor what's occurring at that doorway, it can be opened and used for ventilation. That's typically not what you're asking, I don't think, anyways. So for arrivals and dismissals, one of the mitigations we, we talked about with schools is it's appropriate to prop open the doors to be able to allow, minimize the number of surfaces needs to be touched as the flow goes in and out the classroom. So your, your point of there's a security concern is absolutely spot-on, and we should not be propping doors open unmonitored, and for that matter, leaving windows open where there's a safety hazard that's associated with it, they shouldn't be opened as, as well.
Definitely during dismissal and arrival, I think we would all say it's appropriate to have the doors open, we have teachers and staff members out there, but like during a normal gym class, I assume the gym teachers are engaged in teaching, is, are the doors, are all the doors to the gyms closed during all the classes? Is that what we're?
So if you're asking if I can speak to every school and how it's being done, I can't. However, what we can say is our, our intention is what I just described, and we're now going to put these safety assessment teams in place to be able to go see those exact things that you're asking. So without that information from the assessment team, if somebody has information that it is occurring, it's useful to send that to us, and then we can, even before we put those assessment teams in place, we've always, always had the ability to address those specific concerns. So if we knew that that was occurring, let us know, and we'll go take a look and ensure that our mitigations are being implemented as intended.
I would, I would go to your earlier question about the, you know, are there specific communities that are impacted more than others with, you know, windows that can't open? It is typically the older buildings that have the windows that can't open, they've been painted over over time, and, and they're, you know, the newer buildings, obviously, we're building them where they, they have some windows that can, and, you know, if you've been to, like, Green Run High School, it's a little bit older building, you don't, there's, you can't open, there aren't really open windows at Green Run, so, I mean, there's just places where you can, and places where you can't. I would not say that that statistically impacts one group over another, because I think the division has been fairly consistent over time in terms of making sure that new buildings are moving around in different areas. So if you think about the tri-campus, the tri-campus has two of our newer facilities, you know, and so you, you look around, and then you, and then you look across town, and you see you got, you know, Thoroughgood, and so I, I'm not sure statistically I would say that, I mean, I, like, one of the oldest facilities that we have is down at Creed's, and so we would want to think about what's the impact down there, because that's one where specifically I know they can't open windows, because they've got them painted over. So it's a school-by-school conversation that we have to have, and importantly, what matters is we monitor the HVAC systems, and we make sure that they are working, so that we get good airflow into the gyms, into the classrooms, into the cafeterias, so that that, we have that consistent airflow, and we're using our filtering systems appropriately. I mean, that's what matters.
And that does help, it, it stands to reason to me, and I could be wrong, that in our older schools, in our Bayside Six, we probably don't have a brand-new HVAC in the older school, because I assume we're not putting new HVACs in schools that are set to be switched through?
No, that's actually not true. We have an ongoing summer maintenance plan, and, like, for example, we've just completed at the Bayside Middle School complex, a brand-new HVAC over the last two years, and many of our older buildings, Kimsville High School, just recently got an overhaul on its roof and HVAC system, even though there's conversation about, you know, Kimsville High School is one that would need to be replaced at some point. So we do have an ongoing HVAC program that updates systems, and we have, you know, it's, it's laid out in our summer, and we do that update with the board on that. So, so I would say it's necessarily true. I mean, we can get, and, and we'll, we'll talk with Tony, and we'll get some information to you all about the replacements on HVACs, what's occurred over the last, let's call it, you know, five to 10 years, which buildings those are in, which are our newer buildings, and where are they, and just so that you kind of, again, have that list and can, can, we can speak to that with a little more clarity.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, any other colleagues?
So I want to, oh?
Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I too would like to thank all of the doctors and administration for all the time that you've put into this, it's very much appreciated. As we talk about moving, you know, people into these buildings, one thing that we do have that's anecdotal is, of course, restaurants have been open, all of these big box stores, are we seeing a higher incidence of COVID in retail and restaurant workers than we are with the general public? Because you've already said you're not seeing a higher incidence in healthcare workers, and you would think that that would be the highest, so I'm just curious about, if you work at a hardware store at a Lowe's or something, or a Walmart, you're seeing thousands of people regularly.
Thanks, it's a, it's a fantastic question, and I don't know that I have a great data-driven answer, except from the study that, that in the UK, it was 120,000 workers, the control group being what they had titled, nonessential workers, so essentially workers who could work from home, telecommute, and weren't, weren't engaging the public. And of those, they broke down the essential workers, those who, who were not telecommuting or working from home, and the only population that-
the only population that, there were two populations where they found a statistically significant increase in numbers or risk, and that was in healthcare, and that was in transportation workers. But the transportation worker numbers were much lower than the healthcare workers, and then not statistically significant for educational workers and retail and the like. And so, now, that wasn't powered to show, that was early on during COVID, it wasn't powered to show who was using mitigation strategies and who was not. But that's what the data was suggesting.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Mrs. Hughes?
Okay.
Dr. Spence, do you have any closing remarks?
Not really, Chairwoman Wright. I think just to reiterate something that Mrs. Anderson said earlier, and that I said certainly in my comments, that this is a difficult conversation to continue to have. I mean, like, nobody's happy to have to make challenging decisions where, as I think I stated, you know, no matter what happens, somebody's going to cheer and somebody's going to be upset. And so I think we have to, like, try to press that aside. You know, when you get to a place, there's a place where when you get to, you know you can't make a decision that isn't difficult. You have to go with, lean into what your core beliefs are, as an educator, as a school board, and try to make a decision that reflects that, you know? And so if there's a question about why I brought the recommendation I did, all I can tell you is I had to lean into those core beliefs. And I agonized over it as much as you all are going to agonize over it in the next week, as you prepare to think about this at your next meeting. Staff can tell you, I'm difficult to work with, because I'll be thinking, I've got to a decision, and then three hours later, I call them back, and I say, "Well, I've been thinking about it for the last three hours, and I'd like to talk more about it," you know? And usually, that's, you know, I'm calling Mark at, you know, 10:30 at night, or, "I've been thinking about it all day, I need to talk it out with somebody," or telling Donnie, "He's got to come meet me to have a conversation about it in the middle of a holiday." And that's just, you know, I say that not to take us down a rabbit hole, but to tell you, like, we really wrestle with this recommendation as well. And ultimately, we had to lean in as a team to our core belief, that we think kids need to be in school with their teachers. And we're not doing that, we believe, recklessly. We're doing that with the data support that transmission's low in schools if we mitigate appropriately. And the CDC, again, has made that a third key metric, right? The third key metric is your assessment of your ability to do mitigation. And there's guidance that's evolving now that I think will come out, that will talk about impact on school and monitoring impact on school data that we talked about as the necessary next step to keep kids in school until this is all over. So just know, we come to you with our very best thinking. We recognize it's not easy, and we're appreciative of your questions and listening and working with us.
Thank you. So to our four doctors here, again, it's been conveyed already, but it was Mrs. Felton who mentioned your gift of time. And I suspect none of you really knew what you were in for when you volunteered for this back in, what was it, March or April or something? And for Dr. Lindsay, whether she's listening or not, or, well, this can get relayed later, but I don't think any of us can fully comprehend what's on her plate as our Director of Public Health, and the fact that she makes herself so available to this superintendent and this school board. She's a true gift to our community. So with that, I do want, not that the public needs any reminding, but there is, there's a week between now and our next school board meeting, and we will continue to receive public input. And I just want to comment, with the start of a new year and a clean slate, I first want to say thank you to all the public who, when they write us, they write with civility. And I just want to put out a special plea to certain others, whether it's to the superintendent or to this school board, and it's been a developing issue over the past six months, but some of the emails are just, there's just no justification. And just to let the public know, you can convey your opinion. Me, as school board chair, I've, I just, I just continue to make a point of respecting the whole, the continuum of opinions in this community. So there's absolutely no room or reason for the tone of some of these emails. And I know other school boards in the state have had to make comments, too. So whether it makes any difference or not, I feel it finally needed to be said, because none of these colleagues here deserve having to wake up each day and read some, you know, and again, I want to make it clear, this is the minority. And to convey, again, with thanks, the overwhelming majority of constituents who do write with respect. And so with that, we will reconvene with, next week, with our workshop. Do we have a scheduled time? I'm trying, is it?
I don't have the agenda in front of me. I apologize. If you give us a second, we can tell you.
Manager, I believe we're starting at 4 o'clock. There is no workshop, because we have the organizational meeting.
We, in agenda planning, I thought, made an exception.
I think we did make that adjustment, yeah.
Because of this matter.
You can let the public know that the agenda will be posted on Wednesday, tomorrow by 5 o'clock.
Okay, I'm glad we, I remembered to bring that up. So with that, thank you all, and this workshop is adjourned.
Bye, everybody.